Good evening. I am Cecilia Taylor, the Mayor of Menlo Park, and welcome to our October 8 regular City Council meeting. This is a hybrid meeting with city council, city staff, and members of the public participating virtually in city council chambers. Please note, public comment speaker time may be limited to two minutes if there are more than ten speakers on an item. First, I would like to do roll call and introduce city council members present. Myself, Cecilia Taylor, Vice Mayor Drew Combs, city council members Betsy Nash and Jen Woolison. City Council member Maria Dorr is absent. Staff present include: City Manager Justin Murphy, City Attorney Nira Doherty, and City Clerk Judy Heron. City Clerk Heron, would you please provide instructions to the city council and members of the public on how the meeting will proceed?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Taylor, and again echoing a welcome to this October 8 city council meeting. For members of the public who wish to provide comment on an item on tonight's agenda, after the mayor calls for comment on that item, if you are participating in chambers, we ask that you complete a speaker card at that back table and return to me here at the clerk's desk. If you are participating virtually, we ask that you engage that hand feature bottom of your screen. Calling in from a landline or a cell phone, you can press star nine at that time. That concludes my introductions. Mayor Taylor, you may continue.
Thank you, City Clerk Heron. Our next item is closed session. We will begin with the closed session item. City Clerk Heron, can you please call for public comment on closed session item C1, Conference with Legal Counsel: Anticipated Litigation?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on closed session item C1, closed session conference with legal counsel for anticipated litigation, participating in person, completing a speaker card at the back table, returning to me at the clerk's desk, participating virtually, you can engage that hand feature at the bottom of your screen. Calling in from a landline or a cell phone, go ahead and press star nine now. And this will be the final call for public comment on the closed session item C1. Seeing no hands or cards. Mayor Taylor, you may continue.
Thank you, City Clerk Heron. We will now adjourn to closed session. We anticipate reconvening the meeting around 6:30 PM. Please check the screen for updates. Thank you.
All right. Having our City Council back at our in-person dais. Mayor Taylor, you may reconvene the meeting.
Thank you, City Clerk Karen. Hello, and I am Cecilia Taylor, the mayor of Menlo Park, and I would like to recall our meeting to order. This is a hybrid meeting with City Council, city staff, and members of the public participating virtually in the City Council chambers. Please note, public comment speaker time may be limited to two minutes if there are more than ten speakers on one item. I would like to reintroduce City Council members and staff present. In City Council chambers are myself, Mayor Cecilia Taylor, Vice Mayor Drew Combs, City Council members Betsy Nash and Jen Woolison. City Council member Maria Dorr is absent. Staff present includes City Manager Justin Murphy, Assistant City Manager Stephen Stolte, City Attorney Nira Doherty, and City Clerk Judy Heron. City Clerk Heron, would you please provide instructions to the City Council and members of the public on how the meeting will proceed?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Taylor. So for members of the public who wish to provide comment on an item on tonight's agenda, if you are in person in the City Council chambers, we ask that you complete a speaker card at the back table and then return it to me here at the clerk's desk. If you are participating virtually, after the mayor calls for public comment, we ask that you engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in from a landline or a cellphone, you can press star nine at that time. That includes my instructions. Mayor Taylor, you may continue.
Thank you, City Clerk Heron. Our next agenda item is report from closed session. I would like to introduce our City Attorney Nira Doherty for the report out.
Thank you, Mayor. There is no reportable action.
Thank you. The next item is agenda review. Agenda review provides advance notice to members of the public and city staff of any modifications to the agenda order and any requests from City Council members. Does the City Council wish to pull any items from the consent calendar or informational items to be discussed after the last regular business item L1? Thank you. And does anyone on the City Council desire to modify the order of the agenda? The next item is public comment. Under public comment, the public may address the City Council on any subject not listed on the agenda. Each speaker may address the City Council once under public comment for a limit of three minutes. In some instances, speaker time may be limited. You are not required to provide your name or city of residence, but it is helpful. The City Council cannot act on any items not on the agenda. Therefore, the City Council cannot respond to non-agenda items other than to provide general information. I would like to call for public comment on our following items: the presentation and proclamations, the advisory body vacancies and appointments, consent calendar items, regular business, and informational items. City Clerk Heron, could you please call for general public comment at this time?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Taylor. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment for an item not on tonight's agenda, if you are in chambers, why you complete a speaker card at that back table and return to me here at the clerk's desk. If you are participating virtually, you can engage that hand feature bottom of your screen. Calling in from a landline or a cellphone, please press star nine now. We currently have three speakers. So this is the final call for public comment for items not on tonight's agenda. Okay, so we have a total of three speakers. And our first speaker will be Patrick White, followed by Pam Jones.
Sorry, I'm half crippled. Council, I am here in order to ask you to do your jobs. That is, maintain the parking lots in downtown. Repave and relight the downtown parking lots. Do not attempt to build low-income housing downtown. The Westside homeowners and owners of downtown structures won't like it when their property values go down fifteen to twenty percent. Excuse me. Now, if you tell me that this is the work of the state assembly, I say, so what? If you want your constituents to run you out of town, just keep playing nice with Facebook instead of the residents. I haven't been in this chamber for many years. The last time I was here, Steve Schmidt was mayor. He never ran again. I was fighting against the cement barriers on Santa Cruz Avenue. We, the citizens, won that one. Low-income housing on the downtown parking lots is a worse idea for Menlo Park than blocking Santa Cruz Avenue. Lastly, I invite the citizens of Woodside, Portola Valley, Atherton, Palo Alto to join together to fight this change of character these cities are proposing. We can outlawyer you. And as Donald Trump said so famously, "Fight, fight, fight." Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker will be Pam Jones, followed by Greg Conlin.
Good evening, Mayor Taylor, Vice Mayor Combs, Council members Nash and Woolison and staff. My name is Pam D. Jones, resident of the Bellhaven neighborhood in Menlo Park. I am speaking as the program organizer of Bellhaven Empowered, home of the Kitchen Table Chat, demystifying city government. We received a grant to open a voter education center at the Bellhaven Community Campus. We are fortunate to have received the full amount. Since 2019, the Samatayoe County Board of Supervisors has supported funding for grants to CBOs, directly to CBOs, through a program that's administered by the Silicon Valley Foundation. They are all very clear that our work is to be nonpartisan. This funding is to support increasing voter registration and voting in traditionally low-voter-turnout precincts. We're almost above that mark, and we're going to make that number this election. We have partnered with a number of organizations, including the other CBOs in Bellhaven, the League of Women Voters, South Samatayoe County, and many of the organizations that attend the Voter Education and Outreach Committee, co-chaired by Thrive Alliance and San Francisco People Power. I cannot express how grateful we are for the staff at the Bellhaven Community Campus. Natalia Jones is amazing. The staff is amazing over there. They are doing everything they can to help us because they're as excited as we are about this project. And we look forward to meeting all of our goals. And we will be reporting back to you at the next council meeting, even though it's before the election. And I'm certain that we will have made substantial progress. Do invite you to come and visit sometime. I did leave flyers with City Clerk Judy Heron so that you'll have the information, or you can just go to the website and see what we have there. So again, thank you, thank the city, for all that you're doing to help make this work because truly, this is the only way that a democracy will work, is when we include all people that can vote to be voting, and we need to encourage them to do that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. All right, and our final speaker will be Greg Conlin.
Good evening. I'm Greg Conlin. I live at 1280 Sharon Park Drive. And I recently moved into the city after spending many decades in Atherton. The issue I want to discuss is the 80 Willow Road project, somewhere Sunset Magazine formerly was located. I just think that the... Do we have the... Can I still... Yeah, a photo I submitted, can I show? I received this in the mail yesterday. It's a brochure. It says, "Stop the madness. We have the solution." And it shows a picture of the project as proposed by the present owner. So I think I'm also a candidate for the City Council for the next term. And in my comments made publicly, I've said that I thought that the project was just way out of character with the city. I think it should be... If they're going to build it, I think they should move it to a location that's more suitable, like downtown San Francisco or Chicago or New York, where it'd be more metropolitan nature and it would be more consistent with the... I mean, you're talking a forty... thirty-six-story building, four hundred and forty-six feet high. And it's just way out of character for the residential area here in Middlefield and Willow Road. So I just want to speak to that. And I guess this will come before you with the next housing report. But I suggest that it be changed in some fashion. And they're proposing here a statewide referendum to get rid of the... Builders remedy, is what they call it. It's a state law that says that if the city does not get its housing element filed on a timely basis, that a developer can come in and develop any property that's available without consideration of the building code of the city, which is ridiculous. So I just want to voice my comment that I think that this project should not go ahead in its present form and nature. And I will personally try and meet with the developer and see why he thinks it's... Why he's doing it here rather than someplace else. And certainly try and talk to him about why he should modify it. And I've talked to the people across the street from the project because I just personally know them, that are not part of this project. And their development, I believe, is going to be residential, so it will be consistent with the neighborhood. And I just think that the 80 Willow Road should also be residential and meet the character of the neighborhood and of the city. So I just... And I will certainly continue to meet with you as is... as is, as it's brought before you and speak as I get more information as to if I can talk to the developer, what, what his response is. So thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. That does conclude our speakers on this item. Mayor Taylor, you may continue.
Thank you, City Clerk Karen, and thank you for everyone that provided public comment. Our next agenda item is Presentations and Proclamations. This evening, we have three proclamations. The first proclamation is I-1, Domestic Violence Awareness Month. City Clerk Karen, can you please call for public comment on item I-1?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Taylor. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on our proclamation I-1 for Domestic Violence Awareness Month, you are participating in person. Please complete a speaker card at the back table, return to me at the clerk's desk. If you are participating virtually, go ahead and engage that hand feature bottom of your screen. Calling in from a landline or a cell phone, pressing star nine now. Okay, I currently have one speaker, so this will be the final call for public comment on proclamation item I-1. Right, so I will invite Chief Norris.
Good evening, honored council members and Menlo Park community. I'm Dave Norris. I proudly serve as your police chief. I had to check with the city clerk to make sure it was okay that I could come up and talk during public comment. She said it was all right. So I just have a, a brief couple of comments on this very important issue. So very proud and honored to be standing before you here today to make a quick public comment with relation to Domestic Violence Prevention Awareness Month. As you may be able to see, I'm wearing a purple ribbon pin on my uniform tonight. And I have also authorized the entire department to wear these pins during the month of September, of, of October, rather, to recognize the topic of domestic violence awareness and prevention, which, as you can imagine, is very near and dear to all of us. Almost every member of our team has some kind of connection to the devastating impacts of domestic violence, whether that be their own personal experience, a family experience, or their experience as a first responder. As a proud resident of this county, of San Mateo County, and as a member of the San Mateo County Police Chiefs and Sheriff's Association, I'm very grateful to be living in this county where responding law enforcement treats domestic violence with a high priority on what should be our primary directive at all times, which is protecting the vulnerable from harm. In many of the domestic violence situations that we encounter, we find people who are unable in whatever way to advocate for their own protection and safety, and we are driven to help. By policy and by practice, our Menlo Park Police Department team places the highest priority response level on incidents that are either, either are or appear to be domestic violence-related, and to advocate for those who might be physically, emotionally, or even collaterally harmed. Our police dispatchers are well-trained and committed to identifying incidents of domestic violence and getting the word out quickly to our patrol team. Our responding officers are dedicated to render volatile situations safe and assess for any crimes, as well as evidence of other vulnerabilities that need to be addressed. And we strive to always take the extra step to make our community members feel safe. We're also very fortunate in this county to have a partnership with Communities Overcoming Relationship Abuse, known as Cora, who provides significant counseling, advocacy, and shelter at our fingertips on every single domestic violence-related call. We are grateful that you're recognizing this important issue in October, and we stand ready to serve. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Right, Mayor Taylor, that concludes public comment for this item.
Thank you, City Clerk Karen, and thank you, Chief Norris, for your public comment. And is there anyone here that will be accepting this proclamation?
Yes, Cora Director of Human Resources, Tracy Cook.
Thank you. Domestic Violence Awareness Month was first observed in October 1987. Domestic violence affects people of all gender identities, sexual orientations, ages, racial, ethnic, cultural, social, religious, and economic groups in the United States and here in California. This is a time for mourning those who have died because of domestic violence, celebrating those who have survived, and connecting those who work to end domestic violence. This year's theme is Heal, Hold, Center, which emphasizes that we must work together to embrace diverse paths to healing from violence and oppression, commit to holding space for survivors, and center those most marginalized in all of our efforts to end domestic violence. All communities deserve access to culturally responsive prevention programs and initiatives that challenge the social norms that perpetuate violence and provide support to those affected. One such organization operating in San Mateo County, Community Overcoming Relationship Abuse, Cora, is solely dedicated to helping those affected by intimate partner abuse. From counseling to emergency housing to legal assistance, their services are designated, are designed to provide safety, support, and healing. Please visit corasupport.org/learn to learn more. Here to accept the proclamation is Cora's Director of Human Resources, Tracy Cook.
Good morning, Mayor and city council members.
Tracy, can you pull the mic down just a little bit? Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor and city council members. Thank you, Chief, as well. The reason these kinds of proclamations are so critical is that it's an opportunity for us to bring out of the shadows and into public awareness a crime that occurs most frequently behind closed doors. When we call this out in public, people often come to us and share their stories. When we're out in the community and at rotary clubs, churches, chambers, or business, businesses and schools, we have similar and all-too-frequent experience. Someone after the presentation will come up to us and say, "This is me. This is my friend. This is my sister." Recently, someone at a gathering shared during a presentation that this is how my cousin died. Intimate partner abuse is unfortunately so much more common than any of us want, and way too frequently, it is left unreported. Whenever we can shine a light on intimate partner abuse and the path out of harm's way for survivors and their children, it gives us a Cora hope. And to this end, we want to reiterate our commitment to the County of San Mateo and for the people of Menlo Park that we are here for you and we provide the following: A hotline that is manned 24/7, 365 days a year, where staff are ready to assist with any domestic violence incidents, providing referrals, guidance, safety planning, and when needed, access to emergency hoteling and safety. We have two safe houses in undisclosed locations that can house up to 28 adults and children. Their confidential address is for families to receive safe and supportive care as they regroup. We also provide long-term rental assistance, over a million dollars in HUD County and state mental, and state rental assistance every year to help families live independently and establish a life away from their abuser. We do also offer legal guidance and representation in court, comprehensive mental health services, and a range of community education and prevention programs for families, youth, and community members. All of these services are free and confidential, and we encourage anyone who needs help to use our hotline, 1-800-300-1080. We're also actively engaged in the Speak Up campaign to bring education and awareness about domestic violence to all of our communities. Currently, we are already in San Carlos, South San Francisco, Daly City, San Mateo, Hillsborough, Belmont, East Palo Alto, Foster City, Pacifica, Milbrae, and Burlingame. We would love it if Menlo Park would join. And we'll get our Speak Up reps out to reach out to your communities and provide them with more information. Thank you for your attention to this very serious matter and for honoring Domestic Violence Awareness Month. We very much appreciate you.
Thank you for being here. The second proclamation is I-2, Latino Heritage Month. City Clerk Karen, can you please call for public comment on this item?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Taylor. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on proclamation I-2, Latino Heritage Month, you are in person, you can complete a speaker card at the back table, return to me at the clerk's desk. Participating virtually, engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. Calling in from a landline or a cell phone, please press star nine now. This will be the final call for public comment on proclamation I-2 for Latino Heritage Month. Seeing no hands or cards. Mayor Taylor, you may continue.
Thank you, City Clerk Karen. During Latino Heritage Month, celebrated annually from September 15th to October 15th, we honor the immeasurable contributions and unique stories of Latinos, Latinx, and Latinx people, California's largest ethnic group, including but not limited to those who identify as Hispanic, Chicano, Teano, Teino, Isliño, Boriqua, and Afro-Latino. Generations of Latinos throughout history have helped build our state and local community as we know it, standing against inequalities and injustices, and shaping the social, political, and economic landscapes of the state of California, and contributing to local vibrancy and growth every day. Despite this, we also recognize the persistent disparities and disproportionate challenges that these communities face, and support the expansion of access to health coverage, educational equity, and safe, affordable housing, among other targeted investments and efforts. This year's Heritage Month theme is "Pioneers of Change: Shaping the Future Together", and calls us to look back, recognize, and learn from the strengths, strivings, and achievements of Latinos, and bring that knowledge and visit, vision to build a future marked by equity. Here to accept the proclamation is the San Mateo County Latin, Latino, Latina, Latinx Collaborative and Board Member, alas, Patty Ramirez.
Doesn't look like Patty has joined us in chambers. Patty, are you online? If you are, if you can go engage that hand feature. No, I'm not seeing any hands. Doesn't look like Patty was able to join us, but we'll make sure that the proclamation is delivered.
Thank you, City Clerk Karen.
Thank you.
Our final proclamation is I-3, Cybersecurity Awareness Month. City Clerk Karen, can you please call for public comment for I-3?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Taylor. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on our proclamation I-3, Cybersecurity Awareness Month, participating in chambers, you can complete a speaker card at that back table, return to me here at the clerk's desk. If you are online, you can engage that hand feature bottom of your screen. Calling in from a landline or a cell phone, press star nine now. This will be the final call for public comment on our proclamation I-3, Cybersecurity Awareness Month. Seeing no hands or cards. Mayor Taylor, you may continue.
Thank you, City Clerk Karen. Since 2004, the President of the United States and Congress have declared October to be Cybersecurity Awareness Month, a time dedicated for the public and private sectors to work together to raise awareness about the importance of cybersecurity. Over the years, it has grown into a collaborative effort between government and industry to enhance cybersecurity awareness, encourage actions by the public to reduce online risks, and generate discussion on cyber threats on national and global scale. October 2024 marks the 21st Cybersecurity Awareness Month. Starting in 2023, "Secure Our World" is the enduring Cybersecurity Awareness Month theme. This theme recognizes the importance of taking daily action to reduce risks when online and using connected to devices. Cybersecurity Awareness Month is the perfect time to implement best cybersecurity practices, such as using strong passwords, multi-factor authentication, and recognizing and reporting finishing. Here to accept this proclamation is our IT manager, Danny Daniels.
Mayor Taylor, City Council, it's with great honor. I accept this proclamation. Cybersecurity is something that's very important. It's, it's, it's something that we live with. And that, just the general awareness is, is, is very important. Sorry. I'm, I'm, I'm a client.
Thank you for being here, and let me present your proclamation to you. Our next agenda item is Advisory Body Vacancies and Appointments. J-1, Consider Applicants and Make an Appointment to Fill an Unexpired Vacancy on the Housing Commission. Here to introduce this item is our City Clerk Judy Herring.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. So as mentioned, the item before the city council is to make an appointment to the Housing Commission to fill an unexpired vacancy. The Housing Commission experienced a resignation, and that generated an unexpired vacancy through April 30th of 2026. And staff's recommendation is to fill that before our annual recruitment in April of 2025. We received a total of five applicants. The applications, as well as their applicant's districts, were provided in the agenda packet. And that concludes my presentation. Happy to answer any questions or open it up to public comment.
Please take public comment at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to speak on item J-1, consider applicants and make an appointment to fill an unexpired vacancy on the Housing Commission. You are participating in person, completing a speaker card at that back table, returning to me at the clerk's desk. Participating virtually, go ahead and engage that hand feature bottom of your screen. Calling in from a landline or a cell phone, please press star nine now. So we have one speaker thus far. So this will be the final call for public comment on item J-1. I'd like to invite Stephen Switzer.
Hello, I'm Stephen Switzer. I've been a California resident for four years, or a little shy of four years. I currently work for the City of Palo Alto. I am the staff liaison to their Historic Resources Board, as well as their Architecture Review Board that processes commercial, as well as multifamily development projects. Prior to living in California, I served as a Planning Commissioner for the City of Port Angeles and Washington State. And throughout all of those experiences, I've been able to participate in various conversations regarding housing matters and appreciate diverse viewpoints while also advocating for solutions that are meaningful to each of those respective communities. Now, I understand that dealing with the housing matters in Menlo Park would be a challenging role, but it, I think it would also be exciting. I, you know, would like role, but I think it would also be exciting. I would like to welcome that opportunity. It would be a great honor to serve on the Housing Commission, and I think granting a position on the Commission would allow me that level of engagement with the community that we all call home. So with that, I'll return my time back to council. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you for your comment. That does conclude public comment at this time. I return it to the deans.
Thank you, City Clerk Karen, and thank you so much for the public comment and also for applying for the Housing Commission. At this time, do we have any clarifying questions from City Council on this item? City Clerk Karen, what would the next steps be to make nominations?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Taylor. So at this time, yes, I would ask that we go down the line by most commonly used first name. I will take your nomination. The applicant who receives the most nominations will then be appointed to the Housing Commission. The City Council can also request secret ballot or another form of voting if they wish.
Does a City Council member have a preference on how we vote? What would be nominations?
Okay, thank you. So I will then start with City Council member Nash. May I have your nominee?
Stephen Switzer.
Thank you. All right, Vice Mayor Combs.
Stephen Switzer.
Thank you. City Council member Willison.
As always, I'll give the speech that one of us always gives, which is fabulous applicants. We wish we could appoint everybody. Sometimes it takes multiple applications and some time to get on a commission. And with that, I'll nominate Catherine Dumont.
Thank you. Mayor Taylor?
I'll nominate Benjamin Juarez Garcia.
Thank you. And so with the majority of nominations going to Stephen Switzer, congratulations, Stephen. You'll be hearing from me tomorrow. And again, echoing kind of what City Council member Willison said, great applications. We will be doing our full annual recruitment in April, well, February and April of 2025, where we'll be making appointments to all of our advisory bodies. So our applicant pool will be reaching out to you then. And again, if any other unexpired vacancies come up, I'll also be in contact.
City Clerk Karen, Mr. Switzer didn't get a majority. He got two. So do we have to do, is that enough? Like that he got more than anyone else, or does he have to get a majority?
That is a very good clarifying point, Vice Mayor. I'd look to the city attorney. Would it be a three?
I don't want to create complications that would not need to.
No, it's a good question, and I actually think that we need to pull up our rules and confirm, confirm what it is when there's.
I'm also happy to change my vote or modify my vote to Stephen Switzer.
Okay, let me take a quick peek at the policies and procedures. It'll be just a couple of seconds here. Thank you. Okay, so it requires an affirmative vote of not less than a majority of the City Council present is how the policy is read. So with that.
We need three votes.
We need three. Okay, so I will conduct a second round of voting. And we will use the same process. I'll be going down the line, asking for each City Council's nomination, and then going from there. Do apologize for the confusion I just caused with that. All right, so we will start with City Council member Nash.
Stephen Switzer.
Thank you. And then Vice Mayor Combs.
You know, I want to change my vote to have a little fun with you, Clerk Karen. I'm not going to do that, Mr. Switzer.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. City Council member Willison.
I already took the drama out of my vote. So I'm going to go with Stephen Switzer.
Thank you. And Mayor Taylor.
Benjamin Juarez Garcia.
Thank you. And so now with three votes, we will be appointing Stephen Switzer. Apologize again for the misdraw on the first round of voting, and I appreciate the City Council's patience. Thank you.
Congratulations. Welcome to the Housing Commission. Our next agenda item is Consent Calendar. Under the Consent Calendar, the City Council may take action to approve routine business items in one motion unless a City Council member, City Staff Member, or a member of the public requests that an item be discussed or continued to a later date. City Clerk Karen, do we have any public comments on the Consent Calendar?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on our Consent Calendar items, K one, City Council Meeting Minutes, K two, Receive and File the Annual Inflation Projection Judgment of forty cents per hour for an approved local minimum wage effective January one of 2025 of seventeen dollars and ten cents per hour. K three, the consideration and adoption of a resolution to execute an application with the California Department of Education for continued grant funding towards the Bell Haven Child Development Center operational costs for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. K four, consideration and adoption of a resolution updating the city's Conflict of Interest Code, and K five, the authorization of the replacement of mobile computers for police patrol vehicle using state supplemental local law enforcement grant funding. If you are participating in person, please complete a speaker card at that back table, return to me at the clerk's desk, participating virtually, engaging that hand feature on the bottom of your screen, calling in from a landline or a cellphone, please press star nine now. All right, this will be the final call for public comment on our Consent Calendar items K one through K five. Seeing no hands or cards. Mayor Taylor, you may continue.
Thank you, City Clerk Karen. And at this time, do I have a motion and a second to approve the Consent Calendar?
And for the benefit of the City Council, because we have everyone in person, we will be using VoteCast. I'd still ask that you verbalize your motion and second, and then we can proceed with voting on the screens. Thank you.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. So I have a motion on the floor by City Council member Willison, and a second by City Council member Nash to approve the Consent Calendar. Any further City Council question or discussion?
Yes, VoteCast is not displaying. At least for three of us.
After the fuzzy button?
We're getting like some weird login Microsoft message.
Oh, it's possible an update maybe was going through.
It's all that cybersecurity proxy. That was Mayor Taylor's joke. I stole it.
Okay.
We could do roll call.
Okay, we can go to roll call vote by commonly used first names. City Council member Nash.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Combs.
Yes.
City Council member Willison.
Yes.
And Mayor Taylor.
Yes.
Thank you. And the motion passes with City Council member Dore absent.
Thank you. Our next item is our regular business item, item L, L one. Under Regular Business, the City Council considers recommendations from city staff on policy matters or administrative actions that require City Council approval. The first regular business item is L one, authorize the city manager to execute an agreement with FLOC for fixed automated license plate readers, and waive the first reading and introduce an ordinance amending the Menlo Park Municipal Code, Chapter 2.56, Public Safety Information. Here to introduce this item is our Police Chief Dave Norris.
Good evening again, Council. Dave Norris, Police Chief, introducing this item here for you tonight. This is, we've been here three times discussing this in great detail, and I'm very pleased to be bringing this back to you again tonight. Tonight, what we have on board for the recommendation is to authorize the city manager to execute the master services agreement with FLOC safety, and to waive the first reading and introduce an ordinance amending Menlo Park Municipal Code, Chapter 2.56, Governing Public Safety Information. Just a quick note that on the council agenda tonight, there was a misprint on section four of the ordinance that just erroneously left a little piece from a previous draft of another ordinance, and we will clean that up prior to the October twenty-second date. I'm going to go through this relatively quickly because I know we've all been through this a couple of times, but just for the benefit of anyone who's tuning in that's not aware of the process that we've been through here, just a quick history on this. So mobile license plate readers have been in operation in Menlo Park since about 2013. We did a study session in September of 2023 talking about fixed license plate readers, which are being utilized in many of the cities here in the Bay Area. We're looking to bring that here to Menlo Park. We did a follow-up session after receiving some significant feedback from the council, requesting that we come back with some deeper information. We brought this back in May of 2024, and then we received some direction by City Council to place funding in the twenty-four, twenty-five budget for FLOC fixed LPRs. And then FLOC fixed LPRs were approved as a twenty-twenty-four, twenty-five budget item in June of 2024. So there's a significant amount of study and discussion and public comment and really good dialogue that went into the formation of that. But that's just kind of a brief overview of how we have gotten here. Just a couple of things to add to that about the process itself. We have over, so as I said, over four hours of discussion and public commentary, extensive research into concerns of the public across the national narrative, multiple resources through various channels of research, including some publications that have been done by some well-reputed folks who have, you know, a lot of concern and critique about license plate readers, and discussions with police chiefs across the country on my own part to make sure that we were doing this and getting this correct. In addition, a careful crafting of an agreement ordinance and policy that balance that public concern and civil rights with public safety needs. A couple of highlights to that, the reduction of data retention from six months down to thirty days, which is a significant reduction. I did some quick math. It's about an eighty-three percent reduction in retention time, a commitment to ethical and legal sharing requirements, which is a broad part of the discussion that we had, especially regarding California Values Act, which deals with sharing of immigration information, and then also enforcement that's related to California law only and not related to laws from other states, as those are laws that are becoming ever more disparate. And in addition to that, mandatory quarterly reporting was a topic of discussion, and we've committed to making sure that a lot of this information flows back to you through mandatory quarterly reporting. So I think I've covered just about everything, but just a couple of other quick matters. So we have, we've covered our requirements for publicly discussing technology like license plate readers through our previous two sessions. So there is a Civil Code that requires we do that. We have met that obligation. We have done for you a proposed amended municipal code that covers all of the changes that we discussed related to the implementation of this technology, and emphasis on ethical and legal commitments, as well as the quarterly reporting and reduction in retention time. In conjunction with what's before you, I've also committed to making changes to our policy. And so you also have a draft form. We haven't enacted that because obviously we'll do that following the go-ahead to implement FLOC. But we've done some extensive revision to the policy to reflect both the municipal code changes as well as the commitments that we've made to you to make sure that we're doing this ethically, legally, and that we're reporting it transparently, appropriately to you all. And then a quick breakdown on the cost that you have here on the screen before you. The AOPR cameras themselves are about three thousand dollars per camera per year. There is a seventy-five hundred dollar cost with that that's associated with the software and our ability to use that system appropriately. So it's a hundred and twelve thousand dollars, a hundred and twelve thousand five hundred dollars a year is the annual ongoing cost. The initial implementation cost the first year is an additional twenty thousand five hundred dollars. We're going to pull that also from the same fund that you just heard about for the computer, the in-car computers that Commander Lau has reported to you. That's the supplemental law enforcement fund that's grant funding that's given to us every year. We have some additional funds in there. We're going to apply that so that we're not asking the city for that initial implementation fee. And so this is a two-year agreement with an opportunity to renew after two years, and that is what is before you today. So again, just to go back to the recommendations, which is to authorize the city manager to execute this agreement, and then also for us to waive the first reading and introduce this ordinance that amends the chapter to match up with the needs that we'll have with regard to FLOC, and also to add a couple of items in there that show our commitment to doing this right. And with that, I'm concluded with my presentation. I'll take any questions that you have.
Thank you, Chief Norris, for the presentation. And at this time, are there any clarifying questions from council before we take public comment? Thank you. City Clerk Karen, can you take public comment at this time?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Taylor. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on regular business item L one, authorize the city manager to execute an agreement with FLOC for fixed automated license plate readers, and waive the first reading and introduce an ordinance amending Menlo Park Municipal Code, Chapter 2.56, Public Safety Information. If you are in person, complete a speaker card at that back table, return to me here at the clerk's desk, participating virtually, go ahead and engage that hand feature at the bottom of your screen, calling in from a landline or a cellphone, please press star nine now. I currently have four speakers, so this is the final call for public comment on regular business item L one. Okay, so we again have a total of four speakers. Our first speaker will be Maya Seawold, followed by Randy Avalos.
I just want to again voice my support for the license plate readers. We had an unexpected turnout last night for Neighborhood Watch in Sharon Heights. We were just, you know, talking about the process. Commander Lau was there, and also our wonderful Sergeant Ferguson, and thirty-five people showed up. Crime is a major concern, not just in Sharon Heights, but in all of Menlo Park. From attending these meetings, from listening to your comments, it seems to me that Chief Norris and his crew have done a great job of answering your questions, and I just urgently ask you to make this a reality. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker will be Randy Avalos, followed by Derek Marsano.
Thank you, Council and staff, and of course, Chief Norris. So just to reiterate, you know.
Randy, hold on just one moment. Your volume is very low.
Uh, let me see if I can raise that up for you. How's that?
Can you go any louder?
Um, check one. That's about as high as I can, uh, make it there.
Okay, go right ahead. Thank you.
Sorry about that. Uh, so thank you, uh, council, staff, and of course Chief Norris. Well, uh, just to reiterate a, a couple of things. Uh, so a person does not surrender all Fourth Amendment rights and protections by merely venturing into public domain. Individuals have an expectation of privacy and the whole of their physical movements is the ability to determine movement from the warrantless.
City Clerk Karen, we, we can't hear the.
Give me just one moment. Randy, can, can you try that one more time?
Is that any better?
Try again.
Check one, two.
That's much better. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Clerk Karen. Uh, so thank you, council and staff, and of course Chief Norris. Thank you for your time. A person does not surrender all Fourth Amendment protection by merely venturing into the public domain. Individuals have expectation of privacy and the whole of their physical movements. Is the ability to determine movement from the Flock data without a warrant, there's a violation of the Fourth Amendment. So using a GPS tracker in a car reveals individuals' movements. Supreme Court has found this unconstitutional without use of a warrant. Forest CIRG has rejected police aerial surveillance programs without data storage because it allowed law enforcement to deduce individual movements. Cell location data may be used to track a person's movements, but that also requires a search warrant. Because Flock data records place and time, movement may be deduced, which constitutes a search, which then requires a warrant. So we should be using warrants. Just because other departments are not doing it, doesn't mean we should follow suit, which is basically an un-American practice. The new policy, in stark contradiction to this, um, states reasonable suspicion or probable cause is not required before using the system, which is quite the opposite. Now, Flock's relatively new, this surveillance system. Uh, Virginia Trial Court just actually had a recent case in last year, Commonwealth versus Bell, uh, where a individual went around robbing video game stores, not for video games, but for money. Wasn't the sharpest guy either. Flock was used and then the guy confessed. During trial, motion for suppression was granted, be, which removed all evidence because Flock was used without a warrant. The cops didn't even consider using a warrant. So court ruled in their favor, despite this guy being a armed criminal going around robbing places, the Commonwealth decided not to appeal the case, uh, because they would set a precedent and they felt they would lose on Fourth Amendment, Fourth Amendment violations. So that's concerning. You know, if we have a, a large case with a decent, uh, defense lawyer where Flock is pivotal, that could also be used against that. Um, you know, if we had somebody come from, drove somewhere up here, committed felony that was egregious, they could potentially get off. So we should require a warrant for using the system. If that's not tenable, then the system should not be used. A warrant requirement provides a reasoned check and balance that is fundamental to law and governance. And so it's in your hands to check it here at the local level before it becomes bigger. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment. All right, and our next speaker will be Derek Marsano, followed by Elizabeth King.
Hello, um, am I, am I able to be heard?
Yes, Derek, go right ahead.
Thank you. Um, I want to thank the council, staff and the chief again for, uh, continuing to pursue this, the, the Flock issue. Um, as a Menlo Park resident, we continue to be concerned by ongoing burglaries in our, in our community. And, um, we are, uh, we, we're cognizant of the fact that nearly all of our surrounding communities have employed this or similar technology and are having good results in both deterring crime and also apprehending uh, suspects after crime has been committed. The, uh, the wave of, uh, of crime that we've seen, uh, beginning earlier in this year has, uh, abated somewhat, but there are still continued incidents. And we continue to be very concerned by, uh, yeah, about safety in our homes. We, we are absolutely in favor of the, uh, recommendation to install Flock and to have in our community the automated license plate readers. We think that, um, without this technology in a community, in, in an area, uh, in which we are surrounded by communities that have deployed the technology, we are simply inviting more crime into our neighborhoods. Certainly respect the previous speaker with regards to Fourth Amendment rights. However, um, I, I do believe that this technology will serve as much as a deterrent as it will a, a mechanism for, um, uh, for prosecuting, um, criminals who are, um, implicated by the use of the technology. So once again, uh, I, I want to say thank you to, uh, to the council, to the staff, to the chief for pursuing the technology. And I just want to express the fact that I'm, uh, fully in support of it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. All right, next up will be Elizabeth King.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go right ahead.
Hi, um, thank you, council. Thank you, chief, for bringing this back to the table. And chief, thank you for addressing the concerns in the, um, past few, uh, commission, uh, and council meetings. Um, I am not only a complete streets commissioner for the city of Menlo Park, but I am also a victim of home invasion. And I also hold what I think is the only, um, stagnant Flock safety camera in, um, Menlo Park, which is on my private street in my HOA. And I, um, come to you in full support today. We need to fortify our police force with, um, every mechanism we can that the surrounding communities already have. So there is not a hole in what has become a web of, um, protection on the peninsula. Um, but I'm also here to say that Flock safety works. Uh, the camera in my neighborhood was able to track down the criminals who invaded my home and track them on their route to the East Bay. So I say to you that, um, not only will it be a deterrent, but when used and used appropriately by our, um, police force, which I can, uh, advocate that they have done, it, it, it's effective. So I leave you today, um, requesting full support and asking for you, uh, please pass, uh, the request for the, uh, cameras in the two-year agreement. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Uh, concludes the speakers for this item. Mayor Taylor, you may continue.
Thank you, City Clerk Karen, and thank you for everyone that provided the public comment. And I will actually follow up on one of the questions that why, that was asked, um, Chief Norris around the Fourth Amendment and the warrant requirements.
So I, that, that's new information that I've, that I had not heard, um, up to this point. Happy to, to do some research on that. Um, I am very certain that if that particular case decision had impacted our ability to practice, uh, ethically and, and lawfully with the Flock technology as is currently configured, um, that I would be hearing about that from my fellow chiefs within the county as well as from Flock Safety. I have not heard that. Uh, we've done the very best we can at this point to construct our policy and, uh, and our ordinance to make sure that we're governing this and, and training this to our personnel appropriately. I'm confident that we'll continue to do that. Um, if there were anything that were to come forward that would prevent us from doing an aspect of our work through this technology, uh, we would absolutely take a change in practice to, uh, to adjust to that. And I'd be very transparent about that with this group as well, as, as well as our community.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from council? No one has any other questions? Okay. I, I actually do. My, my favorite topic, Chief Norris, and that is algorithmic transparency, something we cannot see with the software. And so, um, been doing a little bit of research on it and just trying to figure out, does that fit in our municipal code or does that fit in the Flock contract?
I, I don't know enough about how that term is used in this forum to say that it, that we should absolutely put it in one or the other. Um, I, I, I hesitate to make some type of a, of a blanket comment saying that, that I want to change what we've put before you to, um, to make sure that we address algorithmic transparency. Because I don't know where that meets up with whatever proprietary work that Flock does and, and what access we have to that, which, you know, we may not have work, uh, access to some of the proprietary work that they do. And so I, I would be concerned about trying to change an agreement that opens the door to something that, that, that vendor wouldn't be comfortable with because it's part of their proprietary work. Um, that being said, um, I know that we had a, a previous conversation just kind of touching on this topic. Uh, more than, more than happy to do some focus groups throughout the city to talk about what we're using this technology for how we're using it, um, answer any questions that our community might have so that we can be um, as transparent as an agency as we can in how we conduct these investigations through Flock.
Thank you. And, and from my perspective, I'm looking at the, since we do not have insight of the software, um, to me, that's where the transparency needs to be. So it's not necessarily what the police department is doing. It's, um, how the information is gathered, so to speak. So it's actually the software. At least that's my understanding. I could be wrong, which is why I keep bringing this up is just to try to understand it a little bit more. And I believe that the goal around the transparency is to make sure that maybe there needs to be some regular, um, analysis around biases within the software to make sure that it isn't doing um, what concerns think that it will do, um, just to make sure that it isn't. So, and I'm just kind of moving with what I've read and I'm not sure where it fits in this, but it's a concern of mine because usually when we create things, there is a population that is disproportionately impacted and it is maybe not who this infant, uh, this technology is targeting, or at least to try to kind of minimize how many incidences happen and criminal incidences happen. So that's what I'm looking at that part.
And so what, what I can give you is that in, in my opinion, given the fact that the data that we are collecting are characters, license plate characters, um, color, make and model of vehicles. Um, there should not be anything about that that would indicate bias of any kind. We're not digging into identities of any of the people whose license plates passed through our system. That would be part of an investigative process, which we have our own ethical standards and, and, uh, and legal followings that we will do. With that, we do, you know, tremendous amount, as you know, of, of, uh, control for biases from the hiring process all the way through implementation of all of our policies. And, and, you know, those assurances I can give you, we, you know, we give you quarterly RIPA data to ensure that we're, um, we're doing the best we can to, to uh, address and identify any biases and trends that are happening and correct those quickly. Um, I, I see that as a topic area that may be separate from the collection of license plate numbers. And, and so I, in, in terms of, you know, what we can commit to you, I don't know that it needs to be connected to this. I, I uh, absolutely open to the discussion on it. Uh, but I don't know that it needs to be connected to Flock and the, 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 uh, master services agreement specifically. I think, you know, it's a, uh, it, it's a monitoring question. It is a community discussion question. Uh, it is a self-accountability question on behalf of the police department and transparency that, that we are trying to give you. And the amount of transparency that we have now compared to, you know, four years ago or so is, is pretty tremendous. Um, and so I, 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 I know that this is only a, a partial answer to your question, but that's probably the best that I can give you.
I appreciate that, Chief Norris. And, and my concern is, is less with the Menlo Park Police Department and more with Flock. And so because they're the ones that are going to hold the information. And if somehow, and I, I had a question here. Actually, if something happens with our data, um, who's responsible? Since they hold our data, they collect it for us.
They collect it for us. It is, it is held by them, but it is owned by us. And so I think your question was if, if the data that we own is somehow taken or corrupted in some way by Flock in a way that we do not intend it to, to be taken, what happens? Is that your question?
Yes.
And I, and I think our city attorney may have a better answer than I on that because it's a contract question.
Okay, thank you. It's, it's, uh, my question is what, what happens if there's a, a data breach? Who's responsible? Is it on the city? Is it on Flock? And I'm just concerned about people's information being made public.
Yeah, so I, I am actually not clear based on the agreement, what a data breach would be. Um, there is no express prohibitions in the agreement on Flock sharing the information. And there's no state law that actually, uh, precludes Flock from releasing the ALPR data collected. There are state laws that prohibit the city from sharing any ALPR data with any entity other than another public entity. But the agreement has been somewhat carefully crafted, I think, to not make it an express violation of the agreement if Flock disseminates ALPR data. Um, there is an express prohibition, I'm sorry, there is an express provision in the agreement that states that Flock will provide ALPR data to outside sources when required by law to do so. To the extent that there is a breach, but again, I'm not clear what a data leak breach would be. They do have to carry cybersecurity insurance to the extent that a uh, leak or a, a, a data breach came from a cybersecurity breach. They do have a $5 million cybersecurity po, uh, policy. They also carry general commercial liability insurance. And then lastly, the city could always go after uh, Flock for a breach of contract.
Thank you.
Uh, City Clerk Karen, uh, I know that, uh, that Flock has raised their hand. I think, uh, Hector has his hand raised and may be able to help us with some perspective from Flock.
Great. Hector will be joining us shortly.
Um, good evening. This is Hector from Flock's Community Affairs, uh, team and happy to, um, answer any questions you all may have um, around the data or, um, some of the algorithm accountability questions as well.
Thank you. I, I appreciate you being available. And I'm, I'm sure you just heard the discussion, um, the questions that I had asked, um, Chief Norris and expressing my concerns. Um, just about, since we didn't create the software, we really don't know what the inside of that software looks like. And so those are the things that concerns me, um, about how you collect data. It's not just about taking pictures of license plate, but it is whatever the programming is behind which ones you choose or, um, or even accountability around if there are biases internally, what you do to correct those. So I'm looking at, we didn't design it and we're supposed to trust it and buy it. So I just want to find out what, what your procedures are.
Yeah, that's a fascinating and really important question. Our, um, algorithm is solely focused on vehicles and their characteristics and then the ability to read the alphanumeric digits on the back of a license plate. So our engineers are, um, simply feeding, let's say, uh, you know, be able to read a one, a two, a three, um, differentiate between a California, a Utah and Arizona plate, um, for example. And then also be able to differentiate between the color red, the color green, a, you know, and, and features that are solely um, associated with the vehicle. Um, then furthermore, we also don't make any recommendation uh, to officers on how to proceed. Um, this is in, you know, where, with the to proceed. This is, you know, where the algorithm accountability typically comes into places in software where there's a recommendation, and to my understanding, it's a recommendation of an action, right? In our case, an officer has to have a case number, and that's also in your policy, and I think the chief alluded to this, and it's real important for the public to know, they would have had a call for service, a reason to search for a specific vehicle type that would be tied to an individual case, that would be associated, so it's a part of an investigation. All of that is auditable, and also, your policies and procedures delineate how the team would work on that. But we are not creating, you know, propensity to alert on specific vehicles or any types, you know, or, you know, models that are older, for example, really just the features, because the proactive side of the tool, the hot list alerts, that is associated with the numbers on a plate that have been already reported to have been a missing vehicle, missing plate, for example. Hopefully, that kind of provides some insight into that.
It definitely does, thank you. The next follow-up question I had was just around what the city attorney just shared around the prohibition of sharing data.
Yeah.
The data sharing, we know it's city to city from our department, but what's your policy or your practice around sharing data outside of that?
Yeah, and I'm happy to have our legal team have a follow-up conversation if necessary, because obviously, we can't, you know, cannot give you legal advice, but our contract does state that you own the data. We do not have the ability to share the data with anyone. You have that complete control. There is a clause, if we are legally bound to, you know, through a court case, et cetera, we would have to share that information. You are protected because the data is, there's a limited retention, right, that 30 days, that is a fast-moving target. But in addition to that, there's also a clause in the contract where we would still have to, because you own the data, give you the opportunity to refuse or go through a legal process to stop the sharing of that data, so have the ability to interject. So, really, our intent is to always protect that ability of the city to be able to control, you know, who has access to that data. And then, again, that's why that 30-day retention is enough for your department to solve crime, you know, especially if things are not reported right away, while protecting privacy as well.
Thank you for that information. Do you have any, does any council member have any follow-up questions? Now that the flock is on the phone. Thank you.
I don't have a question overall, I can make a comment. And to your point, chief, I know you said this is your third time here talking about this agenda item, and what's being proposed has evolved over those three meetings. And so, I did want to say to you, I appreciate the responsiveness to council as it relates to this item. The initial proposal was quite comprehensive, and I know you, there was some feedback, and you are coming back and have shown a willingness to bring forward a proposal that I would describe as maybe more right-sized, but certainly one that is a reflection of council's direction. I know when it comes to the retention period, the data storage element, that timeline element, some of my colleagues had some concerns about what's standard in these contracts between or agreements between flock and cities. And coming back with the 30-day retention is certainly reflective of that concern that was expressed from the dais, I think, in one of the earlier meetings. And so, I want to say I appreciate the responsiveness and you coming back with a proposal that, from your perspective, and I think possibly from the council's perspective, we see where things land, that that's the right proposal for Menlo Park.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Combs. I appreciate what you just shared, because it's the same thing I see, Chief Norris. My concerns, I've always made clear, and I know that under your leadership, that you are working towards how to make whatever technology we use, not just a useful tool, but also something that will be transparent for residents. And I know that you're looking into other ways to add to that, which I appreciate. At the moment, I don't have any other questions.
Yeah, I just want to echo my colleagues' appreciation, and I think it just shows how lucky we are in Menlo Park to have you as our chief, so, thank you.
I agree that we are very lucky to have you in Menlo Park. I think you're doing a fantastic job with the police department. The security and safety of the Menlo Park community is of paramount importance to me. Nevertheless, I plan to vote against this proposal for two reasons. After initially deciding not to pursue automated license plate readers, a few months ago, city council took another look at them in response to residents' wish for a more aggressive approach to residential burglaries. We still have not seen data that ALPRs reduce residential burglaries or crime in general. They are an investigative tool. Meanwhile, we have seen the bad guys finding easy ways around these cameras. Second, I continue to worry about residents' privacy rights and the security of data captured and shared with this technology, so I will be voting no. Finally, I want to thank Chief Norris for staying on top of the latest practices and tools to assist our police officers in the field. Thank you.
Well, I'm going to make a motion, unless there is any objection, so we can move this along and sort of see where we are. And so, it would be a motion to finalize the agreement with flock as it relates to the cameras, the license plate camera readers.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. So, yes, I appreciate that, and we would require two motions for this item. One would be the first to authorize the city manager to execute a master services agreement with flock to implement and operate the ALPRs. And then, the second motion would be related to the first reading and introduction of the ordinance. So, this time, we'll start with that first action related to the agreement. Okay, and I have a motion by Vice Mayor Combs.
I'll second that.
Thank you. So, I have a motion by Vice Mayor Combs and a second by city council member Woolison, to authorize the city manager to execute a master services agreement with flock safety to implement and operate fixed automated license plate readers. Any further city council question or discussion?
Okay, we're still having some difficulty with... No, it's fine now. Okay.
Let me go ahead and get our motion and second. Okay, you should be able to proceed with voting.
Sorry, there's like an ad now. Oh, I'm, okay, I did it.
Yay. Great. Thank you. And so, the motion passes with city council member Nash dissenting and city council member Dore absent. Okay. And then, I would like to move on to...
I'm happy to move the...
The ordinance.
The ordinance.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. Just one moment. Perfect, okay, so I have a motion on the floor by city council member Woolison and a second by Vice Mayor Combs, to waive the first reading and introduce an ordinance amending Menlo Park Municipal Code Chapter 2.56, Public Safety Information, to update the city's automated license plate reader regulations. Any further city council question or discussion? Seeing none, please proceed with voting. Thank you. And the motion passes with city council member Nash dissenting and city council member Dore absent.
Thank you, City Clerk Karen. And moving on to our next agenda item, which is informational items. Informational items are transmitted to the city council in staff's efforts to provide an update on matters of importance to the city council. Informational items are not action items. However, a city council member, city staff member, or a member of the public may request to make a comment or ask a question on any of the informational items. City Clerk Karen, do we have any public comment on the informational items?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. So, at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on our informational item M1, city council agenda topics, who are participating in person, please complete a speaker card at the back table, return to me at the clerk's desk. If you are participating virtually, engaging that hand feature bottom of your screen, calling in from a landline or a cell phone, please press star nine now. All right, this will be the final call for public comment on our informational item M1. Seeing no hands or cards. Mayor Taylor, you may continue.
Thank you, City Clerk Karen. The next item on our agenda is city manager's report. To introduce this item is our city manager, Justin Murphy.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I've got two items to highlight, a couple of events prior to our next city council meeting. So, the first is an open house at the Bellhaven Community Campus at 100 Terminal this Thursday, October 10th, from 6:00 to 7:30. It's an opportunity to learn about services programs, ask city staff team questions, take a self-credit tour, and share your ideas for future open houses. That's this Thursday, October 10th, at Bellhaven Community Campus. And then, the second item is the Flyway Trail Opening Celebration at Bedwell Bayfront Park. It will occur on Saturday, October 19th, from 10:00 to 1:00. This is a new trail connecting Bedwell Bayfront Park to Bayfront Expressway near Chilco. It's on the National Fish and Wildlife Service lands, part of the Salt Pond Restoration Project. And the day will feature guided walks, games, hands-on demonstration, education booths, and more. So, that's on Saturday, October 19th, from 10:00 to 1:00. Those are the two updates for this evening.
Thank you, city manager Murphy. The next item is city council member reports. Are there any city council member reports since our September 24th meeting? Vice Mayor Combs?
Yeah, I do, I don't know if this is quite a report. I do want to acknowledge that there is a, I don't know if you call it a program or process within San Mateo County, where cities on a rotation basis host other city council members for dinner at some location in the city that's hosting. And I want to acknowledge that, I think it was now a couple of weeks ago, Menlo Park hosted these other cities at the New Bellhaven Community Center. I also want to acknowledge, usually when a city is hosting, the whole council is there and, you know, leading city staff, and for this most recent one, only the mayor was there. There was no other representatives from the city council. My apologies, you did not remind me, though. I know, I know the city managers and some others that were traveling at that time and other obligations, but I do want to publicly apologize that you had to hold down that fort alone, and thank you very much for being a great host for Menlo Park and putting on, as always, a good face for the city.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Combs, and I had the great assistance from our staff, City Clerk Karen, and also our deputy city clerk, Sarah Sandoval. But thank you, I appreciate it. I do have one report out, and that is the subcommittee that was established, I want to say maybe three weeks ago, with Vice Mayor Combs and myself, for the homeless and unhoused. We are recommending that the city council agendas oversized vehicle ordinance at a future date. We're hoping by November 12th, if that's possible. And I believe that was our only recommendation at this time. Thank you. And if there aren't any other questions or comments or announcements, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.